Our next application, Z-18-13, 844-846-WEST-11. Castro, Promes, Delacito, Chico.
Thank you. The commissioners, I want to have a very important conference. Application for you is to construct a six, unitary residential building. It's in line with the head of presidential structure there in the short of the building. There are certain amendments which we need to be questioning. I see it's a great addition to that show. I've got a good idea. I'm not a member of the National Congress. I'm a member of the old professional lobby, and I'm a member of the general city. And at the president's side, we're dealing with a vacant office. And a lot of the pensions are fifty-five-two-hundred. At the president's side, to the right of the lot, where the N F N Street, there's a new seven-unit building that's just been constructed. And on the left-hand side is an older single-family structure. Behind you, we have a red light. Now, we can't even notice the general name of this residential building. First floor, we want a bedroom and a garden, and then a two-bedroom garage. And then on the upper floor, second and third floors, we're building two units of two-bedroom garage. This building will be made accessible.
Yes.
And we'll be able to make that garden space available. Now, you're providing the full state apartment with full vehicles.
Yes.
And that is the code. It will be one nerve that all of Westville Avenue serves in part of the area.
Yes.
You understand, if you approve the application, you don't have to provide a road or a sidewalk or a furniture company.
Yes.
And so the landscaping, which is showing throughout the property. There was some concern in the court of our consultant in regards to an area of this would be draining cycles. They can receive any report disclosed to the air writers of their national office about the whole of regard to providing a straight area of the traffic cycle. Now, should you approve this application, is your objection strong or is it possible?
Yes.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Casney? Senator. Mr. Fernando, if anything, one of the more various things, etc.
Can you read site, man? That one's not working. This will be. Can you describe the site? Site is a big ten-year-old lot, fifty-five-two hundred. The most important thing is the safety unit, the danger. Building was a library. What we're proposing is that the building be located near the rear of the lot, parking in the front. Third page, the door is G-000, on your left corner of those buildings. Basically, follow the required requirements. Most of the spot provides, it allows three garages, which are more, two wardens, rear yard, fifty percent of the lot, twenty-five percent of the lot depth. This lies two hundred fifteen, so twenty-five percent of that could be a fifty-foot rear yard. The zone of coordinates also says twenty-five foot minimum. So we don't need to twenty-five percent. So the areas of the two, need twenty-five foot rear yard, so it's a variance. The previous coverage on monthly value is newer, it says sixty percent or seventy-two percent. And the height is thirty-five feet for a thirty-nine-inch storage. Those are the only areas. The reason we set the building to the back is it gives more space between the buildings, to the right and left, and to the right and left. Putting this building across next to the distant houses to the left. I said it back, prove that, existing with the next to the left. Of course, it's a lot more light and air. And it's the same with buildings of weight. So I think my standard of the building to the next year gives them more weight. I think it would prove the, since the layout of the house, of the most current building, third thing is G-100. It's a bit of a basement, it's a bit of a mechanical storage. Then, to the left, that's the first floor plan, on the lower left corner of the first floor plan, which is here. Then, mainly mine, this is my little apartment, the length side, I don't know if you can keep that in mind.
Are these first floors handicap accessible?
Yes.
There is a handicap part in space, but I don't know.
Handicap, yes. Plus six foot six. Then, on the second, third floor, the two apartments are split off from that. So there's two bedroom problem in the front, two bedroom problem in the rear. Third floor, you have the same effects. That's on G-101. And then, feet, two countries. You have a left corner, functionality, so it's basically a couple of different questions. And it's a little bit of a fight.
Now, can you describe any joint instructions?
To the right, to the left, they say the two families, built towards the front.
Now, do you have to write that all out, or do you have to say?
Correct. Right, one bedroom, one twenty-eight. So certainly, since the problem, so it's a twelve-point requirement, you have to have a contract.
This is one of the questions, one nerve, that's a compromise, is. There was some comments in Harvard's report in regards to trash. Names on property recitals. Do you have to reconsider that issue of the proposal in regards to where the trash should be taken inside it?
We did everything before. What we're suggesting, and I can explain it to you later.
Should. Can I just, this is part of the original plan, that's a so. Now, so, so, we can identify where the marks are, to the original plan. Can I explain?
Well, this sketch I just made up shows us, as you drive into the property, by way, and the parking is to the left side. On the street right side of the property is a landscape area. So, towards the back of the property, towards the building, what we're proposing is a small section that lays the area, this is on the left property line. And actually build a completely enclosed structure that the street refuges in. And then, you know, the way, you can't see it from the street, you can't see it from the neighborhood, parking, and you can really see from the parking car, because we built up a wall around it. So there's screen from all sides. And then, again, from the top line, we should open some access to the area.
You mentioned landscaping, what landscaping, I want to propose to the second.
It's on D A, number two, five. Well, yes, the house. The model is made in the middle, it's a flight stadium. The first is closed, and the landscaping of the early front of the property, and the rest of the building, the demo, the place of the home, both property lines.
Now, should you approve the application? Can you give a negative impact on my strategy, or their opinion?
I don't believe so. It's a R thirty, it's a good news. Six units on the property, I said the property back, I think it's a danger to existing out to the left, as well as moving to the right. It provides K T and the N T and three. So I don't think.
Does the application consist with spirit intended or best plans, or what is it?
Commissioner, any comments?
I'm willing to go to Mr. Fernandez. Governor, please have me call in, you want in the stairwell, that should be closed, who comply with the construction there, are you not, another way over there?
Well, of course, I'm glad I'm in the first. The building will comply with all current construction, as there's spring building, stair towers, um. I don't know if this came into the common. It isn't, I don't know the same time. I have a sheet here, but. I guess this is what, Commissioner.
You may, you may just.
We're not sure exactly what that first is though. So, Sarah, also, the, 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 why? Well, it is. And this, if this had done with the construction part, I'd be concerned, if I asked him, sprinting against the services.
It's a general comment, I mean, you don't say your instructions would mean nothing.
Absolutely, it's a move of the building.
And you would think, if you said that property would be turned to the rear unusual, why?
Well, no, you use it, we'll set the building even back to front of the property, if the parking be timed. Or we'll set the building back, and the parking on the front. It pretty much has to be one of the other.
Correct.
So, in this case, there's a residential structure forward on the property to our left. If I had the building up forward, I would have been paralysed to that building. I think it's a danger to the neighborhood, having this back.
Are you really, or I believe it is to be.
The very, the very, the very.
Alright, so let me go get it. Thank you, Mr. Fernando.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Mr. Fernando.
Commissioner Castro.
Okay, I think the board approved an application for the construction of seven condominium units to the right of this building. You were there to take the board that project. I want to ask you some questions, but I'll tell you this, I wouldn't have a problem with this project if it was lined up with the one that we approved last year. It doesn't look, it looks up, to see a house that is fifty feet deep from the side of. Then a building that is thirty feet out, and then, I don't know, and you're gonna have the building, this building towards the back, with the parking in the front. It would not look good. I'm telling you, it would not look good. And I live in the neighborhood, that's number one. I don't have a problem if the building is better than the one that we approved last year. And I was thought about this, I knew that at some point, an African someone would buy this piece of land that I proposed, exactly what you're bringing to this board today. I have a problem with that. Number one. Number two, the height of the building is thirty-nine point four. That exceeds the permitted height, which is thirty-five feet, more than ten percent. My question here is, in all fairness to you and the African, what is the building height of the buildings, or the, of the building next door, which we approved last year? There is a greenhouse, expanded cave or something to the left, but I'm talking about this building, the one that we approved last year.
But, I don't have that number for me.
Okay, that's important, Mr. Alami, one second. That is important, because if there is an application that we approved last year, that is thirty, thirty-five feet high, and we're going to improve a building that is immediately adjacent to this one, that is four feet higher than the other, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with the app, I don't have a problem with the application, I'm sorry. But I have issues with the way this application is presented to the board. And I need clarification as to what is the height of the immediately adjacent building, which, which is building. Otherwise, we're gonna have a higher building, then a lower building, and then a smaller house, it doesn't make any sense.
I understand the question, but as an architect, I don't believe that every building has to be the same.
And, Mr. Fernando, this is Westville Avenue, please. I understand, I understand your argument, but I, you know, it bothers me, to be honest with you, that applications are being presented to the board, and certain factors are not kept in consideration. I have an issue with that, and it happens every time that we meet every month with the board. Why, I don't know, I don't know. I need to know what the height of the immediately adjacent building is, compared to the one that has been proposed. And we need to analyze how deep is the building going to be built, versus the one that we approved last year. We need to give some, some sort of harmony.
Mr. Fernando.
I would like to object, if I may. Also, Mr. Fernando, I have a problem, go ahead.
Mr. Fernando, I just want to object before being addressed. Then feel free to object, and I just want to express some, some of my opinions. What we do here, personally, what we do, spot approvals, we don't.
Sorry, say that again.
What we do here is spot approvals, we approve one property at a time. We do not approve neighborhoods, we do not approve the city, that's up to the planning. We have approved many properties next door to other properties that we have approved, with certain differences, depending to the conditions of where it's going to be built, and the way that it's going to be built. Few months ago, we used to approve a property on Mary Street, mentioned in the comments, very important, where the building is set to the rear, it is easier to have parking in the front. Perhaps, this property is the one that's right, the one that we approved before, could have been improved by setting the property to the rear, and in fact, the elevation is two feet higher, I didn't pass that property, and there is a, to the rear, where there is a difference in elevation. And by setting this property towards the rear, it is not imposing on Westville Avenue. So, having that said, I agree and I share Mr. Castro's many comments, but I just wanted to express the fact that, because we approved one thing, the plan needs to approve everything based on that criteria. We don't do that. I don't really feel much wrong with this problem, especially when it backs up to the railroad, and there's no effect here. If there were residential units or anything else, I would have an issue. But in this case, I think this property is right, you know, it's a problem, you know, it should be set back, so it can park in, and it's away from the problem. Thank you.
Mr. Fernando, Mr. Fernandez, let me say something. Mr. Castro.
I am, I am always in an opinion that makes sense.
So am I, that makes sense.
I didn't come here to argue with all the commissioners, who agrees with me or who doesn't agree with me. There was an application that we approved, and we don't want to, to have, through the Westville Avenue corridor, a house feedback, another one sticking out, another one, and then, we're trying to create a puzzle there, in the Westville Avenue corridor. That's one. I don't have any problem with this application, none at all whatsoever. The only problem and issue that I have is how this application is being presented. And I'd like to know, so, Mr., look, we could argue here all night. Mr. Fernando, what is the height of the building next door, which we approved last, last year, compared to the height of in this proposed in this building? Otherwise, we're going to, we're going to create a beautiful eyesore.
Although I cannot.
Commissioner, notice.
Although I cannot testify as to the height of the building next door, what I can say is that the building next door is two or three stories above parking. There, there's a, there was, as far as I can remember, a steel deck, where the parking's over, and the parking underneath. Again, because I can't testify as to the height of the building, and I'm, and again, I'm saying, I'm using this as so that we can have Mr. Castro, give him the ability to move on, based on one particular question. With parking underneath, and X amount of stories over that parking, generally, those types of buildings are generally taller than on-grade parking, so I'm just gonna use that and say, you know, hopefully that could help for us to be able to move on to the next issue. And I'm not, again, I cannot testify as to the height of either building.
Commissioners, quick comment. Let's keep that in mind, we'll backtrack, we'll come back to a discussion, but before we go into a closed session, and maybe bring it up, let's move on, for, it is ten fifteen, we do have another application, let's just give them a consideration, let's keep moving forward, okay? We're basically meeting on board, is the dead board, sir.
I think Jake's finished his testimony, and I think there's someone here who's going to speak.
Before Mr. Fernando, let's just make it move on, there are additional questions from Mr. Fernando.
I think there's someone here who's gonna be speaking on the application.
May I, I don't want to sign the Commissioner Castro's question or answer, or reading it, that was just giving information, and if he has a question, I would urge him to continue to ask further questions with this particular round.
Commissioner, I have the same, same feeling, same, I basically have the same, same token, and I think possibly all those commissioners might, we'll discuss that a little later. Let's just bring on testimony, maybe Mike can explain a little bit, or explain a little bit, okay? Mr. Fernando, please.
Hi, I'm, 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 are there any members in the audience who have a comment?
Are there any members in the audience who wish to testify regarding the application? If so, please step forward, one at a time, state your name and address.
Would you raise your mic? Would you, you sound, you're giving, we could, we could. Have a seat, please, put your chair up to the microphone. You, so, would you state your name directly into the microphone, spell your name and give your address?
Elizabeth Marasco, M A R A S C O, eight forty, Westville Avenue.
Senator, please proceed.
I would just like to begin, just to state my experience of the last year.
One second, just one, you're a neighbor?
I'm the little house.
Okay, I'm saying.
In story.
I'm sorry.
She, she's the neighbor next door to the left, the small, the small one, right?
Yes.
So we're looking at the potential building, I think, the little house on the left?
Correct.
The little house on the left.
Proceed.
I'm just wanting to say that my experience of the last year plus the construction going on in eight fifty, actually demolition first, to my surprise, was a wonderful one, considering there was demolition on two properties, they were quiet, they were clean, they were conservative of making, they made sure that I wasn't having any experience, any problem coming. I mean, I really felt like they cared about what was happening in the neighborhood, and especially me and their neighbor, I consider them my neighbor. I was actually so good, I lived, spent that property thirty-two years, and the last ten, so, there were two of them getting down, boarded up a bit, and I had some really bad experiences. It was a constant battle, and I was so grateful when I learned that it was going to be knocked down, and, and they were going to build, I'm just grateful, very, very grateful. I would just like to say that I am in favor of the property being towards the back of the building, of the property, that the building being towards the back of the property. When they knocked down eight forty-six, it was wonderful to have the light, to have field space, to have, like, privacy again, not having a building literally right next to mine, the little house on the left, probably only a single family left, and I do appreciate that space. I think that staggering, that was mentioned earlier, is a good thing. I'm set back about twenty-five feet from the fifty by two hundred, so none of us was sticking out, we're, we're, I think it's, none of us was sticking out, and I'm out of it, yeah, in story. So, I, I think that staggering is fine, I like the idea of the building being in the back. I like the idea of the building being in the back. Um... I guess that's... That's everything. I'm just... I'm pleased to hear that the property is in the back.
Commissioners, have any questions for Mrs. Marasco Hernandez?
I should...
Please go ahead.
Senior... No, no, you see the application.
I... I'm not sure if I have any plans here, because it seems like I may be missing the sheet that shows the placement of the property... Excuse me, the building on the property. But, Mike, look, I'll get to my question now. I'm assuming you've been shown where the building is gonna be placed on that piece of property, and...
I'm not.
And you're okay with it at all? So, you're okay with having cars parked up against your property? Or, I mean, listen, I'm not... Again, I'm not trying to make this more negative. I just want to make sure that you have the information that you need in order to say, "Yeah, really, I really prefer like this or like that or any other."
I feel like that, I went back and forth, I did. And I do think that that would be better for me.
Thank you.
So, you want to make sure directly affect it like this, and you are in favor?
I am in favor of the building being towards the back of the property.
And why is that again?
A few reasons. Immediately, when the building... Well, I lived there thirty-two years with a building right next to me, had no privacy on that side at all. And that's one, privacy. When they're staggering, then you allow privacy, everyone to have a little more privacy, no one's right up against you. When they knocked that down and I have light on that side of the building, it was great. It really was nice to have a view. I mean, I... It was nice. It was dark. I enjoyed it.
West Philadelphia is also very heavily trafficked. Do you think that setting back the building is an advantage to the people that are there?
I don't see... I'm indifferent to that.
In other words, if you're... Setting the property back, would you think that it would be a advantage?
For me, as the next door neighbor.
You are. Thank you.
Yeah, for those with the...
And does anybody have a plan where you can see the layout of the building?
As it relates to the site.
The site.
We have a site.
Oh, yeah. Are you sure?
We have it in front of us.
No, no.
You're talking about...
I don't see the building layout. We can go forward.
We have a site.
Hasn't the building...
Mr. Chairman, that's precisely why I was asking that question.
Mr. Castro. All right. How do we have? I want to see how far you guys are going. The building is... What's the front of the building? I miss the second one. The building is... What's the front of the building? I miss the second one.
Additional questions? Mr. Castro, you have another question?
No, actually, Mr. Gera showing a site plan, the position where the building is going to be located compared to the other properties. I would have had those three papers here. I would not have been as... As you understand.
So, that drawing clarified your concerns?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Fair enough. Commissioners, any additional questions on the neighbor next door?
Three.
Thank you very much. Are there any members in the audience who wish to testify regarding the application? If so, please step forward, one at a time, and state your name and address. Not seen anyone? And before we go to our closed session, does anyone have any comments on this application?
Yeah, I do have a question. We're going to stormwater. I think there's going to be some modifications to the stormwater design. I think it's something that's been worked out as an engineer. I'm suggesting if we're going to primary, I think that's what I got with stormwater, the engineer, and then back to final, I'm suspecting what's all that work out.
Commissioners, any comments on Mr. Gallois's comments?
Please, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Castro. Okay, having heard and being able to review the site plan of Mr. Andred and Mr. Gera, he explained, actually, and I was able to visualize that the position of this proposed building is not going to... It's not going... It's actually going to be beneficial to the building to the left, to the house to the left and to the building to the right, because it would not obstruct the visibility of the immediately adjacent building to the right, which is the application that we approved last year. And I don't have a problem with that, I understand. It is important for us, members of the board also, to understand how a project that we approved is lined up or relates to the project harmoniously with adjacent properties. Otherwise, we're going to approve applications that do not make any harmonious sense. So, I'm in favor of this application.
Commissioners, we're going to a closed session. Any comments, please? Understood. Just made it a closed session. If you, Commissioners, have any comments? Commissioners, any comments, please?
I think that the building's placement is, especially after hearing testimony from the neighbor next door, gives this application serious credence and allows us to more easily approve an application where we would be a little bit more leery of doing so initially. I'm in favor of the upon the foundation.
Commissioner Hernandez.
The next neighbor is here, and she's in favor of the application, so I must be in favor of the application.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I am very much in favor of the application, however, we need, please, Mr. Gallois, to press some concerns to only preliminary approval and not a final.
That's correct.
So, I am for a preliminary approval and not a final, taking what probably five detail of this is going around. So, I'll be in favor of preliminary approval only.
Commissioner Castro, any additional comments?
Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I should have asked this question to the architect before, and I didn't. What type of fence is being proposed?
Mr. Castro, we're in a closed session. That point will be given before Mr. Gallois to resolve that issue. We're good with that?
Yeah, we can also work it out with the application again prior to final. And, you know, again, the typical... That's probably a little...
What type of fence?
I don't know. It's more than...
Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Hernandez. Are there any members in the audience who wish to testify regarding the application? If so, please step forward, one at a time, and state your name and address. Not seen anyone? And before we go to our closed session, does anyone have any comments on this application?
Yeah, I do have a question. We're going to stormwater. I think there's going to be some modifications to the stormwater design. I think it's something that's been worked out as an engineer. I'm suggesting if we're going to primary, I think that's what I got with stormwater, the engineer, and then back to final, I'm suspecting what's all that work out.
Commissioners, any comments on Mr. Gallois's comments?
Please, Mr. Chairman. With your indulgence, I should have asked this question to the architect before, and I didn't. What type of fence is being proposed?
Mr. Castro, we're in a closed session. That point will be given before Mr. Gallois to resolve that issue. We're good with that?
Yeah, we can also work it out with the application again prior to final. And, you know, again, the typical... That's probably a little...
What type of fence?
I don't know. It's more than...
Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Hernandez. Are there any members in the audience who wish to testify regarding the application? If so, please step forward, one at a time, and state your name and address. Not seen anyone? And before we go to our closed session, does anyone have any comments on this application?
Yeah, I do have a question. We're going to stormwater. I think there's going to be some modifications to the stormwater design. I think it's something that's been worked out as an engineer. I'm suggesting if we're going to primary, I think that's what I got with stormwater, the engineer, and then back to final, I'm suspecting what's all that work out.
Commissioners, any comments on Mr. Gallois's comments?
Please, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Castro. Okay, having heard and being able to review the site plan of Mr. Andred and Mr. Gera, he explained, actually, and I was able to visualize that the position of this proposed building is not going to... It's not going... It's actually going to be beneficial to the building to the left, to the house to the left, to the building to the right, because it would not obstruct the visibility of the immediately adjacent building to the right, which is the application that we approved last year. And I don't have a problem with that, I understand. It is important for us, members of the board also, to understand how a project that we approved is lined up or relates to the project harmoniously with adjacent properties. Otherwise, we're going to approve applications that do not make any harmonious sense. So, I'm in favor of this application.
Commissioners, we're going to a closed session. Any comments, please? Understood. Just made it a closed session. If you, Commissioners, have any comments? Commissioners, any comments, please?
I think that the building's placement is, especially after hearing testimony from the neighbor next door, gives this application serious credence and allows us to more easily approve an application where we would be a little bit more leery of doing so initially. I'm in favor of the upon the foundation.
Commissioner Hernandez.
The next neighbor is here, and she's in favor of the application, so I must be in favor of the application.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I am very much in favor of the application, however, we need, please, Mr. Gallois, to press some concerns to only preliminary approval and not a final.
That's correct.
So, I am for a preliminary approval and not a final, taking what probably five detail of this is going around. So, I'll be in favor of preliminary approval only.
Commissioner Castro, any additional comments?
Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I should have asked this question to the architect before, and I didn't. What type of fence is being proposed?
Mr. Castro, we're in a closed session. That point will be given before Mr. Gallois to resolve that issue. We're good with that? Yeah, we can also work it out with the application again prior to final. And, you know, again, the typical... That's probably a little...
What type of fence?
I don't know. It's more than...
Commissioner Hernandez.
I think they're...
Commissioners, any comments on that? Are you okay with that? Commissioners, Fernando. Commissioner Hernandez, still wants to...
No, I can approve. We can have a preliminary approval before Mr. Gallois.
Commissioner Hernandez. Second.
Second.
Commissioner Castro, second. Roll call.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.